Great. Call me in order to complete stand up. I'm a challenge, please just like.
I believe it's a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in the good soul with every team, that's as well.
The roll call please.
Chris Cucia?
Here.
Mr. DeFretis?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Reiner?
Here.
Ms. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Wood?
Here.
Nine present.
Um, we did have a closed session prior for legal and personnel and we will have a closed session afterwards for legal. Okay, yeah. So we just just had the prior meeting throughout legal and personnel. Not on that. Order parts. Mr. Hagan for our foundation.
Where's Planet Foundation met here in the boardroom on April fifteenth. We heard that grant presentation actually come out of the man for us Lego tabletops we use throughout the primary center. Please report that the we awarded about three thousand dollars purchase flag needed to establish these centers for all classroom at the primary center. Uh, so reminder that the foundation will be presenting the scholarship winners at the award ceremony tomorrow evening. And that due to the primary election on the seventeenth, we're going to bump our meeting to Tuesday, May twenty fourth. You're always welcoming new volunteers to serve as investors.
Thank you guys. Justin, do you have a report?
No.
No. Forward to classroom, uh, Leanne Ryan, did you have a report?
I have a report, yeah. On April thirteenth, I had the pleasure of observing the learning support classroom in the elementary school. Ms. Ashley Campbell, learning support teacher and Jamie and Jen former are the paraprofessionals who assistance. Jamie stays in the room and then Jen travels out to the classrooms to um to provide session support. So the day started off by greeting the students if they got out of their vehicles and back in the building. It was so nice to see the smiling faces of the kids at the end of the building, although some of them were still in happy sleep. Uh, one part I really enjoyed was seeing all the dogs that come with with the kids when they come on. It's really cute. Uh, so a group of small students met in the classroom for social group. They sat in a circle with Miss Campbell and asked to play a game. She reached for a container that was called Conversation Cubes. She opened up the container and rolled the cubes on the floor. Each cube had a question on it and then she would ask one of the students to answer it. One of the questions was, if you saw a friend cheating, what would you do? Another question was, I feel most happy when, and then the kid would have to go in the lane. But Ms. Campbell also took turns answering these questions. So it started to get busy in the classrooms as the students came in. Ms. Campbell provided one-to-one instruction with the student while Ms. Fulmer taught the student spelling. Then more students came in from different classrooms and worked on their individual studies. Ms. Campbell and Ms. Fulmer exchanged duties and then Ms. Fulmer did the one-to-one instruction and Campbell taught classes to the group. They worked together without missing a beat. They used positive reinforcement to motivate the students to keep working on their assignments. And they dealt with many interruptions during the day while they were teaching, but they continued to give the students the attention and a level of instruction they needed. Testing days are no business days for me. Students who are anxious about taking testing or uh needing special assistance for a test, excuse me, testing, can go to their classrooms to take their various tests. They usually have about fourteen students at that time in the classroom, it'd be pretty chaotic. Ms. Campbell uses a money reward system as positive reinforcement for doing homework and completing assignments on time. Students can earn eight dollars and then they have the opportunity to buy prizes. This teaches the students many important lessons such as counting money, saving and spending money and being responsible for completing their work. Some of their prizes include digits, county balls and flip-flop card and the students really enjoy this reward system. I commend Ms. Campbell and Ms. Fulmer for having the patience and the skills to teach the students who all have different learning needs. It helped me to understand the importance of making the bill, the paraprofessional positions that we still have. I enjoyed watching these two professionals work together and witnessing the bond that they have with their students. Thanks.
Thank you. Saw a great day.
It was. Have fun.
Uh, Turner?
Yeah, mine's not as thorough as I thought it was.
No, she's.
On April fourteenth, I had my day with Mrs. McClelland. Um, she was fantastic. Um, during the day, the children were in um the library. She showed me around the school, being that I don't have any kids in the school district. Um, it was really great to see uh just see the classrooms, see the school, um, that sort of thing. Um, it was her and her husband's thirty-seventh year anniversary that day, so happy anniversary to them. Um, and what that day was really special because the high school honors kids um were putting on an assembly for the elementary kids. Um, this um program, I think it was. And um our class were able to go to three different tables in the gymnasium. The first one taught them about um uh chemical reactions and how different elements create seeds and and create different, um, I guess reactions within whatever chemicals they were using. Uh, the second one, the students had one of those big electric balls that um shoot like electricity through you. Um, so they had the kids go up and touch them. Their hair got all crazy. They really loved it. And then they also put in a circle and were able to see the reaction through everybody's hands when they were holding hands together. And then the third one, they learned about how um tornadoes work. So they were all very engaged. It was a really cool day to be there. It just happened to happen that that was the day that I picked it to go. So it was um it was just a wonderful day to see what they do and all the energy that she deals with and all of those students. I just commend her greatly for being able to do that. I know I'd be exhausted at the end of each day. So all of the teachers that have to deal with all of that energy is awesome. We had a great time.
Great. Sounds like you had a go fun day.
Yeah. It was really cool too, just the that interaction between the high school kids, sorry, and the and the elementary students. Um, it was it was a really cool thing to see. I I really enjoyed it.
There are other border ports. So we're moving on. Presentations, uh, Ms. Brain Center. Do you want to come up and give a presentation on that? Sure, I'll come back.
Okay, all right, everybody. Thanks for anyone that's joining us to see the budget. Okay, I know we went over a lot of this at the meeting in April. Um, so this is kind of gonna be a little more detailed. At next week's meeting, you'll be approving the proposed final budget uh for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So what what I'm going to present tonight is that budget. Uh, you'll put you'll approve that and then there'll be a awaiting like a we'll have to posted for the public to review. They have a twenty day, more than twenty days to inspect it. Um, and then you would approve it as the final budget in at the second meeting, do. So we're gonna get kind of go through it. Um, I just want to start by saying that the budget was put together with input from a lot of people uh within the district. Uh, administrators, um, a lot of people in my office helping me get through this process. I want to thank all of them. Um, so it's based on um actual expected expenses, also looking at trends from prior years. Um, and zero-based budget um approach was used. Um, so this slide here um is a high-level view of the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed general sum budget, along with the comparison to the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. It lists the revenue source with the three sources of revenue of local, state and federal. These total fifty-five million, six hundred forty thousand, but you can't see that in there um because there's a line item for assigned fund balance in the revenue section. Uh, this is because the expenditures listed below exceed the revenue by one million, forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. And in order to balance the budget, you need to assign this on to from the fund balance. Um, and that's because there is not a tax increase included in this budget. We will go into more detail on the revenues and the expenditures as we move through the slides. Below the revenue uh is the estimated or budgeted expenditures for twenty-two, twenty-three. These are also listed at what I consider a high level. Uh, they're reported at the function or program level. Um, all of these, this is kind of the level that when we report things to P E, which is how we have to report them. They're at this level and then they're then broken down by object. Um, so still at a pretty high level. That's how they have to go to P E. Um, before I move on, I just wanted to show you that that's the on this one, the expenditures at the bottom there, fifty-six million, six hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred and six dollars. So we're going to get into the detail of these as we move further through slides. I just want to start with the revenue. In some past years, majority of the revenue into the district comes from the local sources. Local revenues at forty million, one hundred six thousand, all state revenues just under fifteen million and federal is just six hundred thirty-one thousand. This is an overall increase of two point four million dollars from my twenty-two budget. This next slide shows the majority, it's just the revenue trend with the majority of the revenue, see there, trends with, as I said, local seventy-two percent. Between seventy-one and seventy-two percent has been the trend with local taxes um sharing the burden for funding all of the uh expenditures for the district, district running. This next pie chart helps you visualize just how much of the pie real estate taxes and interim taxes uh in blue take up at fifty-three and a half percent. Basically, that subsidy in the orange at eleven and eleven percent. And then in the gray uh is the earned income tax revenue. So those three combined make up seventy-six percent of the revenue with only eleven percent is is um coming from the state. So that's a big a very large amount of coming from really the taxpayers of the district. So as we as we segue into the local revenue taxpayers, uh, you'll see in blue here the current real estate tax revenue uh for twenty-two, twenty-three. It's budgeted at twenty-nine million, three hundred and three thousand dollars to one, just over one million dollar increase. And the earned income tax, real estate transfer tax is budgeted at eight, eight point four million dollars. Okay, so I kind of wanted to go through and you just missed me on the real estate taxes. Um, I went back through our current real estate mileage rate is one oh one point three seven six. It's it's kind of midway in the county. Um, one mil in the district generate base for next year, about two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Um, in the last ten years, we've had one tax increase in the district. That was back in two thousand nineteen, nineteen at two point three seven six mill increase. So current real estate tax revenue brings in fifty-three percent of the budget. Just under, just under thirty million dollars. And here's why. Um, over the past ten years, there's been a steady growth in assessment values to the gym, just under three percent a year. And I just got uh in March, got the assessment values from the county. Uh, and then I added in the assessment changes that we got up in on, in, excuse me, April. And then we should be getting one more batch here in May. Um, so when I put that out here and looked at it, it's looking as if we're gonna have growth of about one, four point one percent here when we go to do our run the tax bills for the twenty-two, twenty-three um school year. So the proposed twenty, as I mentioned earlier, that the 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 um budget does not include a mileage increase. However, some may wonder what a tax increase might look like for an average owner. I think I've heard that mentioned here now in the past. So I thought, you know, even though it does not include tax increase, I did want to talk about that. Um, we have this opportunity to do so. Um, and some people may not understand how real estate tax works. And I do know sometimes I get calls from people when they get an interim tax bill from us. And so I wanted to talk about that as well. When, because we do have a lot of new development here in the in the district. Um, so when when you, our tax bills go out, they get processed in the month of July. They get mailed out typically the end of July. Um, and those are for the 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 current year, which starts July one to June thirtieth. So if someone builds a house, say, and they move in on October first, um, it's after we've already filled done our tax cards. So we can bill them an interim tax for the month from October one through June thirtieth. So we can bill them for nine months of real estate taxes after they've moved, you know, moved into their home. Um, and so that's where things come into play and how we calculate based on what their assessed value is. We get that information from the county and that's how we we go with the interim tax. Um, it is a current real estate tax to us. It's just billed intermally because it was after the county had done the the tax cards. Um, so for every dollar in assessed value, um, one mil is equal to one dollar. So on a, an example that I have here, um, on a ten thousand, a ten thousand dollar assessed value property, um, one mil would equal ten dollars, two mils would be twenty dollars, three mils would be would be thirty dollars. So I went back through and I looked at our um tax duplicate and seventy-three percent of our homeowners in the district have assessed values between ten and forty thousand dollars. So I just did a small table. Um, the average, um, the homestead median assessed value is twenty-four thousand, one seventy. We just got that information. The county sent that to me. Um, they they report that every every year um in May to school districts. So our assessed value um is twenty-four thousand, one seventy. So that's the median for the for the school district. Um, so when you apply that same principle, you would see what a mileage increase would mean to that average homeowner. But you can also look at, depending on where, example, you might have a home up, um, assess it one of these values. You could see how that would impact you if you were, if we were to do one of these tax increases. But right now we're not. So, um, but that's there for people.
So helpful.
To see. Yeah, I just wanted to put that out there so you can see how that how it works.
Is um this place online?
Um, this is
on here, but I mean, like on what place.
I'll put this, I'll get this, Josh, to put this presentation. Yeah.
This is excellent and I think that this helps people actually understand what you're talking about compared to previously where I think people think this is, we're talking thousands of dollars for a family and that's not the case.
It, I mean, I understand there are people that have assessed values much higher than this. There are. But this is just, like I said, it was seventy-three percent. When I looked at the tax rolls, there are some that are lower. There are some that there are a lot that are higher as well. But it's just, I looked at the average. Yeah. You have to look at your real estate tax card to see what your assessed value is. Um, or call these us, but I'll just tell you as well. So. Any questions on any of that? All right, I'm gonna move on to state revenues. Um, state revenues of fourteen point nine nine dollars is twenty-seven percent of the budget, accounting for a budget increase of about seven hundred thousand. I am marked in blue there, some of the um format accounts that I think can kind of contribute to that increase. There's not much. A lot of it is, two of them are driven by salary increases um and which is retirement and set the seventy-eight, twenty retirement and the seven and one, one, two social security. Um, we'll talk about this a little more and I've talked in previous meetings, but um the district pays into the retirement and we pay um for social security and then the state reimburs us fifty percent. So this is the fifty percent reimbursement that we get. So when we add staff or for Caesar's example, when the rate goes up, um, we get more money, we get more reimbursement back, but at the same time, our expense goes up as well. So, um, those are the two on there. And then the non-public uh people transportation. You'll see, um, in the pre- previously, they combined those on seven, three, one, one is like one line item. I like to break them out as two separate line items, but um the reason why that's coming up is typically that that reimbursement is based on your prior year, what you pay in. And last year, we didn't have a full year of payments to our vendor, so we're not going to get a full year of subsidy this year. But next year, we should get a full year of subsidy because we had a full year. Because last year, because of COVID, we had time when we didn't bus students because we were closed. So we should get that full subsidy next year. Um, and then the state property tax reduction allocation for the first time in forever. Um, the state, we just got letters, I think yesterday those came from the state that they increased uh the amount of from the gambling revenues, they increased the amount of um property tax relief that the that they are giving to school districts. So that is what they gave you to. So basically what that did is that just, they gave us the eighty-two, so we passed that along to the homeowners. It's a credit on their tax bills. Any questions on the state revenue? And then federal revenue, we talked about this a lot in the April meeting. This is just um our investor money and school-based access reimbursement that we'll be implementing um starting here this summer. Our goal is to get that up up and running for the October one reporting quarter. Uh, and then the S R, as we talked about, that's addressing learning loss, summer enrichment. Um, we're going to use that to fund one of our new positions and um after-school programs and instituting it, those types of things. That kind of concludes the revenues. We're going to move on to expenditures. Um, and and your binders under tab eight, you'll see at the front of this binder, there's a lot of different additional information for you. But under tab eight, the very first thing, there's, I reconcile um any changes from April where I had things to where it is now. You'll see there's a reconciliation of the expense and the revenue from where I reported it in April to where I report it now. So you have any questions? You're welcome. So this slide here. Okay, this again is the format of how when we submit our budget to P E. This is essentially the format that it gives to P E. It's at this very, very high level. Um, it's based on the program um and then broken down by its function, like regular programs, special programs, location, those are called functions. And then the object, which is one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, those are the objects and those are um and that's how you upload it. And when you look at this, to me, it doesn't give you a lot of information of what this really is. So, um, it's a concise, uniform document that every school district can do, but I like to give you more information. So this is here just for you to see this is what's going to be submitted um to the state. Um, but we're going to go into more details here. I'm going to take all these numbers and and take the totals and we're going to expand on those as we go into the coming slides. This totals the fifty-six point six million of expenditures that we talked about earlier. And now we're going to go through and we're going to look at these one hundreds through nine hundreds are broken down here with one hundred salaries, two hundreds benefits. We're going to work, I'm going to go through all of these and we're going to talk about them in more detail.
Jamie, I just have a quick question. So it shows that our debt service total for repayment each year is six point two million-ish um on a fifty-six million dollar budget. Is there a state recommendation of percentage of your budget that debt service repayment should be?
I don't know that there really is. I mean, there's, there is a calculation for what? Not percentage, but there's a calculation that can be done to um like a threshold for your debt service. But it's done relating to time that you do bond issues. So, um, I can do that. I can do it.
Does it, does it seem high to you?
No, it doesn't seem high to me. See, I think it should be around eight percent.
Eleven percent. Yeah, a little high.
It's a little bit high. Yeah, it's a little bit high.
Isn't any of these discussions, you know, to borrow any capabilities is based on the up on loans based on also that percentage they went to.
Well, I think too, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of growth here. So I mean, you're gonna, it has to be funded somehow. Somehow.
Any high-growth district, we're putting a lot of interest on children. It's always going to be out of balance compared to a school district that is not building new buildings and adding wings. I mean, there's there's huge capital expenditures that there's no way you're gonna just say, I'm gonna keep the same average as a district that's not spending. When you build a building for twenty million, you have to absorb that into a budget versus a school district that doesn't, it's going to change your percentage. So it's, it's always a crazy part of a high-growth district. We had done a research on that one time. And if you look to all other similar high-growth districts like South Bay, at some of those areas, they have very similar profiles because of that.
My concern is the lack of space that we're currently experiencing with our debt ratio with a budget that doesn't have a tax due, so I want to make sure we're keeping that fine at the midpoint right now.
Keep in mind that even with the tax increase, you're increasing taxes to pay for probably a huge bond issue, which is still going to make your percentages go way out of line. I'm building a building here. It's gonna be a lot. It's it's a significant expenditure or in addition.
At some point, I'd rather have some money down towards something that's zero dollars.
And I think too, I mean, and and while you may have lower, some schools may have low lower debt, but they may not be investing anything back into their facilities. The run of that in Beaver County where they're not putting money back into their facilities and
So there is borrowing capacity.
I've, I I haven't done, I haven't done a calculation, but I would assume that there would be capacity. I'd have to check. I'd have to do the calculation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we just did a bond issue.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we have a good bond rating, so I don't think there's issues around, but. Um, so this, back to this is the um, and just the looking at the expenditures by category or by object. Uh, we're going to go into detail. I'm gonna look, I'm gonna address each of these expenditures and kind of the drivers for each of those expenses. Okay, so the first one I want to go over are these, um, I have the four that are highlighted in blue. These are the four expenditure categories comprise eighty-nine point three percent of the expense budget at fifty point six million dollars. Uh, they are salaries at twenty-three point two million, benefits at fourteen point three million dollars, other purchase services at six point seven and debt service at the six point two. Um, and you'll see along with those, um, pretty salaries went up one point three million, benefits are up a million. Other purchase services is down seven hundred thousand. That includes cyber charter schools and reductions in um some other tuition and transportation. Uh, debt service has reduction because of the refinancing. So we're gonna, again, like I said, we're gonna go through each one of these and talk about this. This is a pie chart that gives you um kind of a visual to see those four that I mentioned and how they really do um kind of that's the uh they kind of do really um eat up the pie there.
Do you consider those fixed too, right?
Yes, yes. I'm gonna start with salaries. As I mentioned, salaries are forty-one percent of the budget at twenty-three point three million dollars. The overall salary budget is an increase of one million, three hundred sixty-one thousand or six point two percent. Reason for that increase is because we're adding positions this year. Um, we are adding three elementary teachers, two secondary teachers, one special education teacher, one school counselor and two technology department and um staff. We have for retirements, uh, we're replacing three retired teachers who are placing at the end, retiring at the end of the school year. Uh, one who's retiring mid-year, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And then the replacement of one retiring personnel administrator. Now there's staffing changes. We're, we're going to be replacing any and all resigned positions, including teachers and support staff. We are moving one part-time high school counselor to a full-time position. And all unfilled um support positions are included in this budget. Um, also, I wanted to mention that um collective bargaining agreement wise, the teachers are but through June of twenty twenty-six and support staff through June of twenty twenty-three. So before we talk about um staffing that we are adding, I wanted to kind of talk about alum elementary enrollment projections because that it was the driving force behind the elementary positions that we're recommending. Uh, so you can see here in this, in column one, I have the grades, the grade levels listed. Column two is the Column two is the, was the enrollment as of March first. And then we kind of moved those kids and we come up with our projected enrollment for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Looked at our current sections and determined that the class size in column five would put grades four, five, and six at twenty-seven and twenty-eight students. So we decided that let's add a teacher to each of those grade levels and see how that impacted the class size. So by doing that, it reduced the class sizes down to twenty-five and twenty-four. So that is why we, you know, wanted to maintain that appropriate class size. So that's why we're recommending those three positions at the elementary level. On the next slide, we are this kind of gives you the recommended staffing. I wanted to kind of go over just justification rationale behind those. For the special education K to sixth position, that really is driven based on compliance case load for specialized for school counselor at the elementary level. That will ensure a counselor in every building and alleviate the need sharing of counselors, which we currently do. And will really be able to allow us to address the increasing social emotional needs of the students. At the secondary level, at English, we needed to reduce class size numbers and ensure scheduling of English classes at the high school. And for tech ed, where we're looking to increase the high-level math, science, pre-engineering elective classes available at the high school. I think Dr. Gross had talked about that in previous meetings. So this will allow us to be able to, to make those offerings available to students. The increasing the assistant principal starting rate. The district currently has an MOU with the teachers here in, and that we've been using that on an annual basis for a professional to serve in the role of assistant principal. And we really like to hire a permanent Act Ninety-three physician to alleviate future needs for those at MOU and to ensure continuity and consistency in that position. For the school counselor, part-time at the high school, that half-time position, we're looking to increase that to a full-time position to ensure adequate coverage for the counselors there. And again, to meet the social emotional needs of the students really at that, at that level. And then the two technology positions, those would be taking those student, those employees are basically bringing in the workers from our blue chip, who's our contractor, and bringing them onboard to be district employees. It's just a snapshot of what makes up the twenty-three point two nine nine million dollar salary budget. You've seen that before. And then this slide just gives you some of the highlights of what the cost is to the district of a new teacher when we add them. A bachelor's degree versus a master's degree, what the average teacher salary is for twenty-two, twenty-three in the district with salary and benefits at one hundred four thousand dollars. And then what for twenty-two, twenty-three, what the minimum teacher salary is, which is a bachelor's degree. And what a maximum teacher salary is, that would be someone on a master's thirty at seven twenty. So that is what they cost the district for someone that's at that level for salary and benefits. Any questions on salary? We want the benefits. All right, this one, fourteen point three million dollars, twenty-five percent of the budget with the three blue ones I have highlighted, basically the bulk of the cost for that line item. Overall, it's a budget increase of just over a million dollars or seven point seven percent. Healthcare, social security, retirement, those are always the big read that dominate with employee benefits. So we're just going to head right into the next slide, which is, I'm going to get touch on all three of them. The PISA's rate, contribution rate at thirty-five point two six, it's an increase from thirty-four point ninety-four. The expense is eight point one million dollars or fourteen point three percent of the budget, and that is an increase of six hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. Now, again, part of that is attributed to the increase in the rate. Part of that is also because we added staff, you know, we're adding staff. And part of it is, you know, raises, things like that. Health insurance premium, we have a rate increase this year, six point two percent. The expense is three point seven million dollars or six point six percent of the budget. And the increase there is two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. And just so you know, we have three hundred and five, for that, next year, I have three hundred and five employees covered under that healthcare plan. That would be employees, so there's two hundred and four teachers, sixty-one, and teachers now men, sixty-one support, sixteen retired staff, teachers now men, three retired, the eight positions, and then I have some of the vacant positions included in there as well. So total of three hundred and five is what's budgeted. Social security contributions is one million, seven hundred eighty-two thousand or three percent of the budget, and that's an increase of one hundred four thousand dollars. So this slide here is PISA's employer contribution rate history. So this, again, I showed it in April. Just shows you when, you know, how that rate has really gone up. I mean, we're, it's starting to flatten out a little bit, so it's, you know, things are getting better with it. The hard part.
What's the reason for the rest that increased?
Well, that had to do with how the fund was being managed and a lot of there's, it's just how it's been funded and right now, we have, if you look at our financial statements, there's an unfunded liability there with a lot of that, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're, you know, we're trying to get it, they're trying to get things to where they can manage things, yes. Right now, the way we, you know, we basically are funding it as we go, but that's really not the way that it should be managed. But I have a note there, for every dollar that a player earns, because we get fifty percent of what we put in back, but for every dollar that everyone earns, we're putting in seventeen point six three cents into the return. So where it used to be, we put in almost two and a half cents. Now we're putting in almost eighteen cents for every dollar that they're making because they contribute it. And this next slide shows how the, when our contribution is done over the same time period. It's even more, you know, it's been a lot of districts, or it's fortunate with the growth that you've had here to be able to make it through that with the tax increases and help fund those. Yeah, fund for that, yeah.
Clearly, it's not teachers' fault. This is nothing to do with them. This is way out of there.
Purchase professional and technical services. While purchase professional and technical services facility makes up three, about three and a half percent of the budget, there are a number of expenditure categories that encompass this almost two million dollar category. Special ed, student-related services topping the list. Included in this four hundred and sixteen thousand dollar line item are skilled nursing services, pension, personal care aides, hearing and vision services, OT, PT, and speech therapy services, sign language interpreting, and translation services. Next on the list is substitute staffing, following at three hundred eighty thousand dollars. The budget is based on an average daily fill rate of twelve and a half subs per school day or two thousand one hundred and sixty-six days for teachers and a hundred and thirty-three days for nurses. The more cyber academy fees are budgeted at two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is similar to this year and based on fifty-two students. Although with the world getting somewhat back to normal, since I'm hopeful that maybe some of those students return to the classroom for twenty-two, twenty-three. Contracted technology services that has gone down quite a bit. You'll see that the, this budget decrease of two hundred eleven thousand, a lot of that is contributed to the contracted technology services because we moved the staff over to our payroll. The rest of the line items on that list are pretty straightforward. Those are the main ones. And again, that contracted technology was the driving force behind that, the budget decrease. There's a bunch else on there. And the other part of that was, we did also had one skilled nursing service for student who's graduating. And that was the other part of the budget decrease. So we no longer have paid that for that. So that is out of the budget for that student who won't have that skilled nursing service anymore. Any questions on any of those? Purchase property services. This is a little one, six hundred fifty-three thousand. Something one and a half percent of the budget. But here you see the majority of the line item of the budget is repair maintenance services, water and sewage, and the copier lease. The various repair maintenance accounts total four hundred and six thousand dollars. They include preventive maintenance agreements, repairs on equipment, building repairs, building automation service agreements, inspections for sprinklers, firearm systems, vehicle repair maintenance, technology equipment repairs, repairs for nurse equipment, useful instruments, and security equipment. And then the office's copier lease, that is a sixty-three month lease that we just recently approved for twenty-six machines. Starts July first, saving us two thousand two hundred sixty-three, two hundred, two thousand two sixty-four annually, but it also gives us two additional copiers, and all maintenance and supplies are included. And any questions on any of those? Other purchase services is just around twelve percent of the budget. It's a big line item, six point seven million dollars. This one did have a seven hundred twenty-four thousand dollar decrease. We're going to go through those. They are primarily due to student transportation and tuition, which are the two main line items that make up the bulk of this budget. Student transportation comprises five point seven percent of the budget at three point two million dollars. The contract for student transportation includes a two point two five increase. However, Tina, our transportation director, has spent a significant amount of time reviewing the routes and has proposed a consolidation of private procura runs that will contribute to the budget decrease. In addition, a ninety-six thousand dollar budget amount for possible new runs from twenty-one, twenty-two budget has been reduced to twenty-five thousand and moved out of here into the budgetary reserve line item, which I'll get to later in the presentation. Currently, the student transportation budget is a hundred and ten thousand less than the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So I'm going to kind of turn this over to Tina right now to talk about her plan to consolidate the non-public bus routes. And she talked to you some, she talked to you originally about it in March. And she wants to expand on what she talked about in March. Turn that over to her.
Originally, when we spoke in March, we talked about a conservative estimate of a hundred forty-four thousand dollars in savings, which if you go to tab seven in the binder, and you look under red, eliminated runs, private procura, we discussed a hundred forty-four thousand dollar savings, a conservative estimate based on preliminary findings. After going through and doing a significant amount of information, compiling the information, seeing how these public, non-public buses run, I was able to cut that even more. So what I initially did was, if you look to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we currently have two passenger buses that utilize four St. Kilians and North Catholics and Blessed Philos in Eden. That's six for North Catholic, St. Kilians, two for Blessed Philos in Eden. Currently, we use, we run three thirty-passenger buses for pension, Holy Sepulcher. The cost per year for those non-public bus routes for the eight seventy-two passengers is four hundred eight thousand. The cost per year for the ten Christian, Holy Sepulcher route is a hundred twenty-seven thousand. We also have two Aquinas routes that we run thirty-passenger buses at a cost of eighty-five thousand per year. I can reduce that down to one Aquinas, Aquinas route and incorporate the other one to our mainline contract. We have busing that is included in our mainline contract. There are several things, and that could be taken out of our separate bill, billing for private procurals and included in the mainline contract. I've reduced the St. Kilians, North Catholic, Blessed Philos, and Eden Christian route from eight to five, seventy-two passenger buses and one thirty-passenger bus. That's a cost per year of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. A total cost savings of a hundred and ten thousand dollars by consolidating those routes. Ten Christian and Holy Sepulcher, I can reduce to one seventy-two passenger bus at a cost of fifty-one thousand per year, which is a total savings of seventy-six thousand in addition to the two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Adding the forty-two thousand for the Aquinas route that would be eliminated, we would have a total driver savings of four CDL drivers. Just like Dr. Gross had discussed at the last meeting, the situation with custodians is dire. It's just as dire on the school bus front. We don't have people coming in the door as bus drivers. So we're trying to think out of the box, find new creative ways to get the kids to school and save drivers that we can use on route staff. We don't have drivers. Also, it is a proposed savings from the five hundred and seventy-eight thousand to three hundred and forty-eight thousand, which is a total savings of two hundred twenty-nine thousand, five hundred ninety dollars. If you look again under tab seven, I have written down the difference in route times by the different colored sheets of paper. So the blue sheet shows North Catholic and St. Kilian ride time changes. It shows the proposed ride time on the left column, the new stop time proposed for next year and the current stop time that they have this school year. Out of a hundred and fifty-six total students, only sixty, sixty students would have a change in ride time. All the others would remain the same. And that's for the North Catholic and St. Kilian students. And you can see that the addition in ride times, the largest, the largest addition was twenty-five minutes for one stop. But anywhere between five and twenty-five minutes was the increase for those, for those sixty students.
And some of them actually had a decrease, correct?
Correct. So then you look at the yellow sheet, which was the elimination of route number fifty-six. So we had six St. Kilians buses, took that down to five. That would be the elimination of route number fifty-six. As you can see, in the vast majority of the instances, it reduced the current student ride time. Yeah. That's by eliminating that route and consolidating Blessed Philos and Eden. On the pink sheet, now these would be the Eden Christian students and the Blessed Francis Silo students. The Blessed Francis Silo students would be combined with the North Catholic-St. Kilians routes on the five buses that we're incorporating for those schools. The Eden Christian route would be a separate route, which would be its own thirty-passenger route. Initially, when we discussed the transportation changes originally, the way that the schools dismiss in the after the way that the schools dismiss in the afternoon is not beneficial to combining some of these routes. So I had to kind of change up what we were doing for dismissal, and we would be bringing the Blessed Silo students to St. Killians in the afternoon to meet up with those other buses. Instead of taking those students out of the district and then bringing them back into the district, it just seemed like it was a more efficient way of doing things. So the increase in time for all the kids for for St. Killians and North Catholic in the afternoon. Now, these, the first sheets that we talked about were morning time changes. I have not completed the afternoon routes based on wanting to see how the morning would go, and then all the students will incur probably a ten-to-fifteen-minute ride time increase in the afternoon because of waiting for that transfer bus to arrive from Blessed Philos to St. Killians. However, the dismissal time at St. Killians takes anywhere from fifteen to twenty minutes. I've had buses sitting there loading. They only load a short amount of buses at a time. Their parent drop-off is included. Um, so it, it, it lengthens the time of dismissal. So those kids aren't gonna incur a huge amount of waiting time, but they will incur a small amount of waiting time before having to come back to the district.
Okay, question, just from my own knowledge, DNR, is that do not, does not ride?
They do not ride, yes, that's correct. So out of these students um that were added to their time, and these ride times are not out of the ordinary for schools that reside outside of our district. On the Pent Christian, Holy Sepulcher side, there's two sheets, one is broken down AM and PM. I highlighted the stops that would incur the largest amount of increase in time based on where they are. Um, there's a current stop at East Crushen and Spring Street on the Pent Christian route, and that's the time those kids get picked up and dropped off currently. If we added the Holy Sepulcher kids that only have a six-minute ride time, their ride time would increase significantly. However, between the Pittsburgh Road stops and the East Crushen, we could um maybe work those stops out to maybe reduce that time. It's possible depending on how we would, we would route it. But all the green are reduction in times in the morning, and the ones that are not highlighted are, are kind of the same. Um, there was a larger amount of reduction in the morning than there was in the afternoon because some of these kids for Holy Sepulcher will be incorporated in our public school runs, which means that they will have to be picked up from Holy Sepulcher at three o'clock, brought here for a three-twenty dismissal, get on our public school buses to go home. So the afternoon ride times were increased more um than the morning times, but you can see that even with that, there was still, the green ones are reduction in times that they would spend on the bus. All of those changes would equal the two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars in budgetary savings and the four CDL drivers.
And each of these though, it's, you know how many kids that would affect the moves? Not here, like say this one right time where it increases all the way to fifty?
Mm-hmm.
And it's, how many kids is that set?
Um, I did it based on the kids that ride. So the, so there's two lines. That would be two students that utilize that stop.
Oh, okay.
So each line is a student that would utilize that stop.
Thank you for that.
And that would be for every one of the spreadsheet.
Yeah, no, this is very helpful. So Tina, this was from my, last year, it looks like the longest ride length for this, longest ride time for this group of people, there was an eighty-minute. Am I right? That's the one from the Pierce Road. And so then this next year, the longest ride time, I'm saying is fifty-five minutes. Is that correct?
For which ones are you looking at?
The Pent Christian, Holy Sepulcher.
Okay, Pent Christian.
Yeah, because I'm just looking and saying, you know, we're going down, there's still some from the last year that were fifty-one minutes.
Yeah.
And so that was the longest ride in this year. I can see it's
In the afternoon and in the morning?
And in the afternoon.
Yes, that, that would be correct. Uh, it's those ride times, so again, well, there, because of the three o'clock dismissal time at Holy Sepulcher and the travel time to here is twenty minutes, those kids currently are being picked up at three o'clock and taken immediately home. Now they'll have to be picked up at three o'clock, brought here, which we have a three-twenty dismissal. So you, you figure you're increasing a twenty-minute from the time they get picked up from school till the time they get home. Not necessarily an additional twenty-minute ride time. It's just an additional twenty-minute wait time before boarding our buses here to go home. But that is something that we've done in the past. Um, the reason that we stopped doing that in the past, from what I understand, is the bell times did not coincide with our bell times. But as the years have gone on, the bell times are more um in sync with ours, and so we can continue that practice like we've done before.
And when you approve this, how is that communicated to these families that choose to?
Um, it's, it would be communicated um through the contractor generally sends postcards out to these parents with their ride times. Yeah, so um, you know, these parents are used to these ride times, and so with change comes um, sometimes people don't do well with that, or they're fine with it. Um, but I know change, sometimes people don't react kindly to change, but
Right, I just wanna make sure that it, you know, obviously, for, for school to sure that they have ample time to
Here, oh, we are, there are, yes.
Ample times to make better arrangements, and to make their parents be
Yes, typically
If something, if they're unhappy with the time, then we are planning
Yeah.
They have enough time to make their
And typically, um, my bus routes are completed by the end of July, early August, prior to school.
And so when does the vendor send the, the notification cards out?
At that time. Same time we do it for our publics.
So they can begin in August, three weeks more or less?
Yes. It, it really is. I mean, it's a small number, but honestly, in the scheme of things, picking up four cars is huge.
More questions for Tina?
We're gonna move on to uh tuition. Um, tuition budget, as we mentioned earlier, it was uh, and shows on the slide, is three-million-one-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, or five-point-six percent of the budget. Um. So included in that, I have a breakdown of different types of tuition. Uh, and it says there's a quick increase to uh char, cyber charter tuition. Um, that cyber charter tuition is one-point-eight-million dollars. It is a reduction of four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand over the current year budget. It's still pretty significant um compared to prior years. Uh, right now, it's a hundred-and-twenty-eight students is what's in the budget, but that's what we currently have this year. Uh, and not quite comfortable yet to reduce that number. Not sure what's gonna happen with students, but so we're just keeping it there, hoping that it doesn't go up. Um, not, non-public schools, um, eighteen students uh in the budget for next year. We did have a couple of students who are graduating, so that number, uh, we do have a budget reduction for that lineup of a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars. Uh, approved private schools, uh, ten students there, uh, and fifty-five thousand, that's one student who, a student moved to an approved private school, oh, excuse me, to a non-public school this year. Um, so that approved private school's on a year lag, because we pay for the year prior. Um, so next year, we're done as students, so that's the fifty-five thousand budget reduction there. And then the VOTAC is based on, that enrollment is based on a three-year, like, looks at the three previous years and does an average, and there's a whole um calculation. So on average, our three, three years' average um enrollment was just under forty students. Um, so those are the, um, how those numbers are calculated for the enrollment, um, the tuition for those um categories. Um, so I want to talk a little bit more about cyber charter enrollment. Um. It is a decrease, like I said, of four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand. If you remember, Jill talked last year about how much we would need to um kind of reduce that budget to not have a deficit this year. Um, and that kind of is carrying over into next year. And so this slide shows you um, some pre-pandemic numbers for cyber charter school enrollment and tuition. So in eighteen-nineteen, we had sixty-seven students in cyber charter, and tuition was eight-hundred-five-thousand. We had fifty-four regular ed students and thirteen special ed students. In nineteen-twenty, that was sixty-nine kids, uh, at eight-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars, fifty-one regular ed, eighteen special ed. And then the pandemic came, and those numbers jumped to two-hundred-and-sixty-one students for two-point-one-million dollars. Hundred-and-twenty-five regular ed students, and we doubled special ed students to thirty-six. So that did come down some this year to um hundred-and-twenty-eight students at one-million-six-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand is my estimate for what the tuition is gonna be for this year. Ninety-seven regular ed students, thirty months special ed. And you can see there, uh, to the right is um what the enrollment is currently. Um, with fifty-seven elementary students and seventy-one secondary students.
So with the same number of students out, tuition is helping with those charter schools?
For next year?
Yeah.
Yes, because the rate will go up? Because as Yeah.
It has nothing to do with their actual costs.
Yeah, it's based on our cost?
Yeah.
So I
Judging that rate?
Yeah. So I did a what-if here. What if, uh, we had only sixty-nine kids next year in cyber? That would reduce the tuition to nine-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand. This is my estimate. We don't have the rate shut. I won't have the rates budgets finished um and finalized, but um that would be a budget reduction of eight-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand, which would be, that's the bulk of the deficit that we currently have. Um, and I used, if you're regular and sixteen special ed, what if we had only ninety-two? What if we're like, they're gonna get back to that pre-pandemic number? So what, is ninety-two a good number? That would be one, just on one-point-three-million dollars tuition, and that would reduce the budget by five-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand. Again, these are just what ifs. And what if it was a hundred-and-five students? That could bring it down to three-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand. So really, any kind of reduction would really is helpful to the budget. Um. So hopefully, um, you know, I know we are making efforts to, we've reached out and tried to, you know, we're making efforts and to contact them to see who we can get to bring back. Um, and, and we may look to do more of that as we move into next school year. Um, but a, as those rates continue to increase and, you know, it would be nice if the legislature could do something to help control those rising costs, because the other issue is that we have kids that go in as a regular ed student, and then they end up as a specialized student when they're there, because that rate is more than double what's the regular ed rate is. So um, and, and that, there's nothing we can do to you know, appeal the fact that students now are specialized students when they, when they go to cyber school. Supplies. Supplies is four-point-seven percent of the budget, or two-nine-six-nine-eight-six-thousand. Quick, I'll run through that. Um. Top four items are the general supplies, utilities, curriculum, and tech supplies and software licensing. Those are the four main ones that make up this budget of two-point-six-nine dollars. The supplies, um, general supplies is the first category. It's thirty-five percent of this budget. Um, it has an eighty-four-thousand-dollar reduction. Um, I, I did take a look at it and tried to, you know, I was looking to see where I could reduce across the board and was able to. I looked at a lot of the what was budgeted and what we spent in the past, you know, several years, and just felt like we could shave a little bit off that. Um, so I was able to reduce that some. The um utilities, I did increase that by about forty-four-thousand dollars, just in, you know, due to the economic conditions and where things are with, with, you know, the economy, I just felt that we should pump that up a little bit just to be prepared in case we have, see higher, you know, natural gas prices as we head into the
The utilities, natural gas, electric.
Yeah. This one is the curriculum cycle. And Gross, Dr. McMahon has the um, the curriculum cycle requests on the agenda for approval this, this month. That's the English Language Arts textbooks for K to twelve, the science textbooks for grades six to twelve, and then we have the asset science kits um for K to twelve, or I'm sorry, K to five. And then there are growth textbook requests from the principals totaling twenty-seven point, sorry, twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred for a total of five-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand. This is a pretty sober, what we purchased this year of a hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars. So it's a pretty significant one this year. And then the other one that we talked about was uh technology supplies and software licensing. Uh, that's a four-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-dollar budget line item. Again, a lot of that is software and software licensing fees for all the different software, so that we need to run the district. Um, but there is an increase of about forty-two-thousand, and I have listed there on this slide, um, the, the what contributes to that. And the first one is new student online enrollment software. Um. Just a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. Um, the next one is the new uh help desk software that Brian would like to purchase, uh, help desk software for technology and for uh the maintenance department. Uh, there is a budget software that I would like to purchase. Um, and then we had BM licensing uh for additional BDI servers that Brian needed. And um, I was able to just this week um reduce um some software that we had in there, because Dr. McMahon is going to pilot IXL. Um, so we were able to kind of pause a couple of the other softwares that we had. Um, and then the rest is just individual licensing increases.
Just that first free one-time cost, just getting software here is that good?
Yes, that's correct. Any questions on any of those? First, that's equipment. We already went over all of these on budget, four-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, four-hundred dollars. Uh, the technology plan is there, uh, the new staff, um, items that are requested, and then um some of the equipment that we had. In your binders under tab eight is supplemental reports, and I believe I have in there the stuff that was not approved, if you want to look at that. You know, when you get a chance, there's, you can look through all the other tabs, but there's other information there as well for you. The um, the last object is the other objects that are for some of the reserve. That service, six-point-two-million dollars. Police chair reserve, as I mentioned, is a hundred-and-fifty-thousand. This is something new. Really hasn't been done in the past. As I mentioned, I really tried to zero-based budget and really tried to budget based on what I truly think expenditures are gonna be. So um, I put this one-fifty in there. It's kind of earmarked. I, hopefully, we don't need it, but would be, you know, if um, it's kind of, if we would need to add a bus run, or if we would need to add something um for special needs, like a student moves in or there's something, because I don't, there's no money set aside anywhere in those budgets for those types of things. So it's a little pot, just in case something like that comes up. There would be funds available for that. Um. So when you look at the overall budget, um, if all the kids came back from cyber and we didn't need to spend this money, we would be pretty much break even. So um, the athletic case, the piece for athletics, those really are officials and game workers that are not district employees. That's kind of what goes into that. Any questions on any of those items? Lastly, we're gonna just, this kind of pulls it all together. This is the top fifteen expenditures. These uh kind of a recap of everything I just went over, and it's ninety-eight-point-six percent of the budget. Um. The purpose really is to show you that there's really not much in the way of discretionary line items, as most of these are either contracted expenditures or necessary in order to operate the district. And then the all other expenditures are, the detail for that is in what under-espets them. Uh so yeah, just kind of pulls it all together for you there. And then last slide is just the projected fund balance. So it just shows, again, it shows it to you with prior years as well. The revenue at fifty-five point six million dollars, expenditures at fifty-six million six eighty-three um with the shortfall there of one million forty-three thousand. So the fund balance, if the, if uh if the projection comes in around seven eighty-five for the current year, then fund balance would start out at six million four eighty-four, and we would basically use that fund balance to balance the budget. And that's pretty much all I have for that. I can answer any questions. So second tab that you have there is the general fund budget. Um it's just a draft, because one of the things we have to do on the tax pages is put in the homestead farmstead number from the state. They pre-load that in the software. They haven't done that yet, because they just got the numbers and they're going to preload it tomorrow. So I couldn't finish it. I mean, it's pretty much done except for that. Um so this is just a draft, but this essentially is what you'll be approving next week as the proposed final budget, and then it'll be what gets approved. And June, now, we can make changes if you would want me to make any changes to reduce anything in any expenditures or if I find some money and we can increase revenues between now and June.
I do have a good question, because I know that if my memory serves me correct, there's going to be a few expenses that aren't here, like the fence rate. But you don't anticipate those to be high.
Yeah, and those two could come out of the capital account, which don't need to go through. Thanks, everybody. This is amazing, Heidi. Thank you for making sure people are able to actually see what we're discussing. That's very helpful.
Yeah, I love that you do.
And you said you're going to put that slideshow, so
Yeah, I'll put it.
Driver's hands.
Right, right, draw this branch there. I'm moving on the agenda. Uh sorry, student council online this evening. Is there anyone from student council? Is there anyone from student council available? Typically, they come the second meeting, so hopefully catch up next, next week. Public comment, agenda items. Is there anyone in the room on the comment agenda items?
Oh, that means?
Want to talk about, yeah.
Yeah, no, not
You signed up for public comment?
Yeah, not agenda items.
Is there anyone on Zoom wish that public comment on agenda items? Is there anyone on Zoom wish that public comment agenda items? Seeing none. Moving on with the agenda. Next week we'll consider amendments. Um the main agenda, the personnel, can I have a motion? Under personnel's numbers one through twelve?
Make it so good.
Have a person, a second, board discussion comments. Same none, all in favor, I? Opposite? Moving on with the main agenda. Under finance, we will consider one through sixteen next week. Next week we'll consider programs, numbers one through three. And under others, we'll consider one through nine. One through ten. Let's do ten on my last one. Yeah, one, ten. So now it's us on the public comment. Looking for me. Nothing.
Let's look, hey, yeah? All right.
See, I wasn't that long away.
No, I actually feel very interested.
I, I just need your name and address, and then you'll have three solid minutes.
All right. My name is Amanda Savage. I live at one oh four Love Road, Valencia.
Great, you have three minutes.
All right. So not only am I a resident of the district, but I'm also a parent to three boys that are, two of them go to Mars, one will be going to Mars soon. But I'm also a teacher at the middle school. I teach eighth grade science there, and so this is my fifteenth year working at this district. So I just wanted to share something that I'm passionate about right now, and I know my students feel that passion now in class, too. And so we had a um a classroom, an outdoor classroom at Mars Middle School. So I'm not sure if you're familiar with this or not, but the classroom was located um by the shop foot area by the Mac. So it's under a nice grove, shady trees. There were six solid benches there, it's nice gravel. There was a whiteboard. We didn't really use that often. But that area was perfect for my students. We did a lot of outdoor labs out there. We do our big field lab at the end of the year there. I take them out for tree classification, different activities like that. I actually have a guest speaker coming out from Tree Pittsburgh this coming Friday to be able to help the kids with some STEM activities relating to tree canopy and aging of trees and different things like that. And so this um outdoor classroom, if you're not familiar with it, was actually built by a boy scout from tree fifty-eight. He was a former Mars student, and um that was built in twenty fourteen at a cost of about nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars, not including labor and the volunteer work and everything that went into it. So this money came from the donations from local businesses, as well as community members, including myself and my father, who contributed put a lot of time into this as well. So the student heard the need from both students and teachers who were wanting a space for outdoor learning, and he made this want a reality, and it has been used by many teachers since twenty fourteen, as well as the cross-country coaches, as well as lots of other students who can find shade in that shady spot, make friends, different things like that. And it's a very important space. So I have many lessons in which I specifically tailor to using this outdoor classroom space as a location. Like I said, including our big outdoor soil lab. So coming to the point of my story, so unfortunately, during class yesterday, I looked out my window and I saw all the trees gone. I saw them taking down this giant enormous oak tree that was almost two hundred years old or so. And last year, we were celebrating Earth Day and Arbor Day. We have a botany unit going on right now. We're taking um a look at all the different plant characteristics. And so whenever I saw those trees coming down, tears, everything. Uh I apologize to your students.
I heard you.
Maybe most of my class that period. And so I, the emotion just came over me, because I know how valuable that space is for myself, for my fellow colleagues, the students who use that space often. And so I was very upset by that. A lot of students, just by seeing that, after having been in that space last week.
That was your friend. That was three minutes, but just finished.
But having been in that space last week, it meant something to them. Knowing that we were going to go back out there again this week with our guest speaker, it meant something to them. And now it's gone, totally bulldozed. Now, I totally know that the access road is coming. I knew that. I was aware of that. Um however, I wasn't expecting it to come this soon. I thought we had, at least until the end of the school year. And I was totally caught off guard whenever I saw those trees being cut down and knowing now that I had to change around some of the things that I'm doing for the rest year, because that's gone, because we didn't get that communication that that valuable space to us is gone. Something that I helped invest my personal time as a community member and my personal money as well is now gone. So there was an article published last year in University of Illinois that describes very well how the greenness around schools increased academic performance and enhanced learning, so to also lessen stress and mental fatigue in students. Being outside is good for our students. Taking a break from laptops is good for our students. Learning about the natural world in the natural world, which we do in eighth grade science, is good for our students. So studies have shown this. I'll be happy to send you those articles. So I know this would go in no matter what I say, but I just wanted to let you know that this is valuable outdoor space to us, and I just want you to know that it did make a difference to me, and it did make a difference to my students and past students and future students that no longer have access to this space. So it was a meaningful classroom tool, and I feel that our district is kind of falling behind other districts who value and understand the importance of outdoor learning spaces. Instead of planting trees, we cut them down here. We don't have the opportunity to plant them like other districts do, and it's really disheartening to be able to do that. So unfortunately, you gave the approval for the classroom to be taken out, and John and Randy did an excellent job actually removing and salvaging what they could from the benches and the marker board and things like that. So my two questions really quickly are, number one, would I have permission to actually bring the salvage benches to my home, so that way I can fix them up? So that way we can use them again and place them somewhere else at the middle school? So that's my first question. You know, some of them got kind of destroyed. I know Randy and John did the best with Big Toy, but some of them are actually able to be used again. So it could save some money. It can have a new spot. And then, second of all, if I bring to you a proposal in the near future, would you be able to work with me to be able to choose a location at the middle school that might be a little bit more permanent, depending on what our plans for the middle school site are in the future? And discuss possible funding to be able to create a new space to replace this one for our students, since it is so valuable? So like I said, it's very personal to me, and I, I apologize to any students that saw me cry. It's very unprofessional, but the wave of emotions kind of overtook me, and so just better communication for something like this. Even if it doesn't look like someone uses it, we do, and it is personal.
Well, first of all, I want you to know, I didn't even know there was a ground for classroom middle school. I don't have any children there. I had no idea that this room was going to impact this. And that was certainly something that we did not know, which there was a big communication. This was not like an open site. This this was the whole, this communication, we didn't even know that this was hurting or hurting anything. And then, second of all, is there a place to move this to?
So I know an Eagle Scout had approached me. Two good Eagle Scouts had approached me, but I know Mr. Coulson was kind of hesitant, because we weren't sure of the plans with the roads, two twenty-eight projects. And so we weren't sure about that. There's a spot that's near where the greenhouse is on the two twenty-eight three degree roadside, but there was mention that that might be too close to the roads. So just thinking about what our plans are at the middle school, knowing where we could possibly put in some benches, that means we would want to kind of build it up with some trees as well to make it a nice desirable shady spot. So there's a lot of thinking that will go into it, and we want to be able to keep it there for the future.
If you can put it down by where the future retention point is going to be, then it's just going to be below the
Big ravine.
Yeah, the big ravine. But, but what's retention point is, when it's converted, it's like a natural wetland, so then you can, you know, there's different organisms and everything else.
Yes, you mean like behind, like where the shop with this area?
Below, below the uh baseball fields, like for the present.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We actually had an outdoor classroom there whenever I went to Mars. I was a student at Mars, too, so we
Although there'll be a retention facility there, and when, when it's converted, it'll be like wetlands.
See, that would be really amazing. We could get the kids involved with doing the adventing and everything else there.
And I can think of three key numbers off the top of my head that I think would be interested in assisting with this project as well. I'm only one of nine, but like you have me, but I'm in.
Yeah, I think it'd be a substantial proposal. Just get some details together and plan together.
I know, because it was just a lot of time and effort to get the funding in place for that first one. It was more than, almost a thousand dollars plus time, so
Just establish, I would, I would recommend you get your location and get some details down. We put a proposal, but yeah.
Okay, okay. That's good now.
That would be, that would be a very good that one.
That's a very good opportunity. I appreciate that.
Yes, and so minutes once I'm going to have quick ones.
All right. Yeah, because I know I wouldn't want to do any, I, I just want the plans with the building to be solidified and everything, so we kind of know.
It might be a great way to make something out. If, if there's a plan long enough advance, it could be advertised among the students of Trithering. Students of maybe a Boy Scout or somebody that would want to participate.
I know we've turned away quite a few Boy Scouts and everything right now with Eagle Scouts, because we weren't sure about what was going on with planned middle school.
At some point.
Yeah, yeah.
It could be a lot of student involvement, even in the construction, which could be very
Right, because that's what they did before. They had the whole Boy Scouts.
Do you think involved? It could be, it could be other
That would be amazing. Something, because you can count me, I'd be out there every chance I could, for sure, and I know several other teachers would as well. So I know it's been a little spotty with people's that aside, can't go out as often as we want now, but hopefully next year that will
They could be even better than it was.
That would be amazing.
The fact that they're not
No, I appreciate that. Like I said, I can't imagine the kid were probably, what is she doing right now? I'm like a Lorax, so I'm sorry. I appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's support and knowing that this would be a possibility. So I'll let my students know that, that everybody here has our back and wants to help.
It's not gone. It's there. The benches, there goes some sort of work, but just to keep them, and we could, you know, refurbish and put them, you know.
I mean, if they're coming back to the district. Wait, see, it's funny that you're here this evening, because I was, the way it was given to me was Randy was telling me, I don't want to be Randy, but Randy, I, I may have misunderstood. He was saying that somebody at the middle school would like, since we're ripping the benches up, can they take them home? I said, oh, there's a whole process of us giving anything away.
Well, that, that was me and probably
But if you're saying you'd like to take them home, knowing that, so we can talk.
Yeah, yeah.
Fix them up and bring them back.
And bring them back. I don't really necessarily see an issue with that, because you're not, I thought it was a private person who would just
Well, no, it was me.
I'm like, no.
At that moment and everything, thinking that, oh my goodness, like all of this work, all this time that the student put into it is now gone and everything. And so I had asked if we could possibly just take that and even use it for other Boy Scout projects or something like that. That's what we had initially thought, so that's why I meant take it home. But if we can possibly create another area, then maybe we can use that, because I, I know they're behind that one red barn, so I actually checked them out.
Yeah, so we should just talk and maybe try to identify an area
Okay.
And get an idea, and then I can bring that back to the board.
Okay.
That will be identified.
All right. I appreciate that very much. My heart feels pounding.
I guess, I'm not the shock and awe campaign. I mean, I think a lot of us were probably I don't want to sound, I feel bad not knowing.
No, I was just under the impression that it was going to happen in the summertime, that area was going to be cleared out, so I just thought that we had that time to be able to do, like our, because Tree Pittsburgh, a guy's coming in on Friday, we're going to meet with him, but now I have to do something else to do. Because it's not safe to take the kids out there anymore with all the heavy machines, and I don't know where else
I think it'd be pretty
So
We can take a look, and I, if it's obviously passionate about it, the kids aren't too, and we'll, we'll try, we'll try to identify something rather quickly.
It's an old, there is another answer question. I never knew about that one. There's the one over at Ox Gray that's been there forever. I'm going to get some
Well, that's the elementary school.
Yeah, that's
Yeah, go back in the nineties, early nineties, there was an outdoor classroom below where our current one is down the hill. Whenever I went to school, I remember sitting out there often with Mr. Schumaker and everybody else, so, yeah.
Just thank you very much. I get something from you.
So rather than, we're on the same, something I can get, we'll, we'll go ahead and store what we have.
Okay.
You don't have to take it all.
But if you want to do something, whether it
Well, no, I just didn't want somebody to say this was junk and just get rid of it at the school, knowing that it was, it's still really good lumber. Like, we can refurbish it for something at the school. We can even make the bench better or whatever, so
It's just sort of funny, because he's like, if someone wants to take that, I'm like, I can't give it away. We've got to like go through a process.
Okay.
But now I see who it is. It's you.
Yeah. And I, even you're going to do a lot of that. I want to explain myself in front of you two as well, so
I thought somebody like, hey, I know her.
Well, you did, yeah. I, I heard.
Exactly. We'll get it figured out.
We were unaware, so I appreciate. That's what I kind of figured, so. And we gave out three hundred trees last week to students, too.
We'll figure it out. You're, we'll be good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Give us a few re-in contact. Yeah, okay. Take a walk.
Yes, I appreciate it.
All right. Everyone in agenda public comment. Someone else in the room, so. Is there anyone on Zoom wish that public comment at this point? Anyone on Zoom wish that public comment? We're trying to figure out the technology with that technology.
He's using an old version of Zoom, and if I put it to the panelists, they'll probably kick his camera on. I don't know.
If he wants to. He may not want that.
We're trying to avoid that for you. Unless you just want to put your thumb over the camera.
Hello?
Hey, we can hear you scrambling around.
Um maybe you can't get my video, but can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect. So just.
Fantastic. My name is Justin Will. I live at two nineteen Taylor Ridge Lane, Mars, Pennsylvania.
All right, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Um I'd like to thank everybody at the meeting tonight, um and all the board members for all your hard work you put in. Um definitely a proud community member. When I drive by the high school and I see that we won the Blue Ribbon Award. Um it's a great honor for the school and for everybody. Um I have two boys that are in second grade. The school year that they've had this year has been fantastic. The teacher's been amazing. Um they've really enjoyed it. My one son Elijah is attending the extended school year. And last year, over the summer, it was fantastic. It was at the elementary school. Um great program, great teachers, and it's really what he needs. He needs a little bit extra help. He needs to be in school over the summertime. That way he can stay in his normal routine and when he gets back to school, it's not so different for him. Uh this year, the extended school year is being moved to the high school. Most of the kids that are in that program are elementary aged. Um kids that are going from first grade and then there's a large group of them. It would be nice if it'd be at the elementary school. Um so they could get used to the to the school building. Um my my son, it's it's great for him if he could stay at that same building. I know it was designed around the summer cleaning schedule, but I know everybody in that room, um currently, all school board members um would not put summer cleaning schedule above the needs of all students. So I'd like you to try to rethink that. Um it's not gonna cost any money. It's not gonna change to the NORAP because it said in that um the location is subject to change. So I think it would be best for all students to have it at that building because the equipment, the desks, the chairs. Students themselves, it's tough for them over the summer. You know, there's kids in the neighborhood playing. It's it's nice as a parent when I go to pick them up that I get to see them outside. They're on the swings. They're, you know, they're playing on the the equipment. I don't know where they're gonna have their recess time at the end of the day if it's at the high school. It worked out fantastic last year. I would like to, you know, just have that rethought. I know there's so many decisions you make, probably just it was proposed and um you know, not a whole lot of decision was made, but he will not be able to go if it's at the high school. It's just too difficult on him to, you know, go to a different building with all these, you know, big desks and the teachers will have to pack up their rooms. So um if you could please, you know, discuss that and reconsider it, I'd greatly appreciate it. And thank you for all your work and um I appreciate all you do for the school district.
Thank you.
We've been looking into it. It's just that we're not like going around the cleaning schedule. It's just we need to want to make sure that we have a place that can be cleaned in a timely manner with students being there. And I talked about our custodial issues. We also have older students that go to the E S Y. We didn't realize it would be a major issue, but I don't want to discredit the gentleman's comments. We can take a look at it. You know, we we try to manage and do it in an area that we feel confident that we can control with with the maintenance issues and the custodial needs. And I know Randy was, people here almost begging like, please don't place it at the elementary school. We can take another look at it to see if it's possible. I don't want to discredit, I get it. I don't want to discredit what I'm saying. I mean, with the younger children especially, they're a little more comfortable in their area. Everything's all small. There is a better outdoor space, but we can, we can look at it. We've we've been struggling and did that. But makes good points.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom wish to have a public comment? One more.
Hello?
Go ahead. Uh give us your name, your address, about three minutes.
Hi, it's Julia Knitsky, two thousand six, Maxwellane in Mars. Thank you for everything um this evening with the presentation of the budget. That was the best presentation that we've had in a long time uh with line items. I just wanted to thank you for that. Um I wanted to kind of give my thoughts on extended school year being relocated to the high school this year. I too um am not really in favor of that. I'm kind of trying to advocate for the teachers. Um the special ed teachers, as all of our teachers, work really hard. Um and I feel like the special ed teachers have to kind of do a little bit extra with e with doing I E Ps and scheduling meetings and things like that. And now they have to literally take um autistic support classrooms and wrap them up on a pallet and then have them shipped over to the high school and then unpack and then repack. And I just think that that's really unfair to do to um these teachers that have worked so hard. I um know that in the past, I was told E S Y was never at the elementary school. It was always, I think, at the middle school. But with the middle school renovation project going on, they had to relocate it to the elementary school. But really, um we've never had autistic support classrooms before either. So this is something new for everybody. Um you know, since the only tax increase we've ever had in twenty eighteen, that year it was blamed on special ed. I'll never forget that presentation and the board members in the room should remember that um when it happened. Um and and so that year is when we put in place things in the primary center that we've never had before. So I just want everyone to reconsider relocating these classrooms. The teachers already do enough. Um it's really important to keep these kids in a setting that they're used to. Um smaller desks, smaller chairs, smaller bathrooms, kind of like bright colors, things that are like, you know, already up in a more of an elementary school. Plus the playground, you know, sensory relief of the children and the sensory rooms are vital to these kids. So I just wanted to kind of please ask you to reconsider moving these these children this summer. Um and I also um wanted to ask, um I might have missed it. Um I just wanted to remind everybody about the ESER funds that we were using for Reading Rockets. I wanted to know if we had a plan in place to reassess, um since we weren't able to do it this second half of the year, um reassess those children who were in the Reading Rockets program and how they're not like, are we gonna do some sort of intervention for them in the next coming school year? Um it not necessarily with the ESER funds, just in general, because it was such a high number of kids. Um that was all.
We're actually looking at some summer programming. We're in the middle of planning that now and I'll be making sure we have enough staffing to do it. Tentatively looks like we'll be able to make announcements soon regarding summer programming. Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom wish to have a public comment at this point? Seeing none, there's anyone from M A E A? It's a representative there tonight. From M A E A. Seeing none. I'll move on to administration. Dr. Grace.
I just wanted to um announce that it's Teacher Appreciation Week this week. Um so I'd like to thank all of our teachers for all the things they do. Everybody knows that, you know, these last two years have been very trying, but they've gone above and beyond. So I appreciate them. Wanted to say we appreciate their efforts and also staff appreciation. Sometimes during Teacher Appreciation Week sort of miss the focus that it's pretty much appreciating all staff. So one of our, some of our teachers are very happy. Teacher Appreciation Week, we appreciate all you doing and all of our staff. Um Watermelon Welcome is tomorrow. I was psyched up for that. We have the awards program at the high school tomorrow at six thirty. Um so it's a pretty, pretty busy time of year with lots of, lots going on. So that's all I have. Thank you, Dr. Grace. Dr. Green.
We are, we had our federal funding slash ESER, our ESER meeting last week with our stakeholders. And as a committee, Dr. Grace said, we're in the process of planning to utilize our ESER funding, our ESER funding to have a summer lift off program. We unfortunately do not want to interfere with our extended school year program happening on the July. So we're looking to remove all this to begin on August eight, nine, ten, eleven. We'll be sending out a survey to our current K five parents for their interest level and getting ready to lift those children off to the next school year. Now, K six will move into secondary level and the seventh grade. So it'll be our current grade six through grade eleven. We were serving, serving those parents for any kind of summer enrichment regarding mathematics. And additionally, and thanks to Kenneth Plune, one of our high school teachers who also instructs English language learners, he had an awesome idea of needing to set up tutoring sessions for our, our students who receive English language learning and almost make it a one-on-one tutoring session for them. So we'll be putting that out too. So that's coming. We're in the process of creating that survey that will be coming out because we survey our teachers and so we know how many we have. Um we'd like to try to take small groups to be fun and exciting, but the first of the day, so we wish to have a survey coming next week. Looking for parent input to see what kind of interest level we'll have, what we can, and that being out, we're planning that. So we're gonna come on our utilizing our ESER funds to address the problem we have.
Thank you, Dr. Man. Ms. Branch there?
You don't, you don't want to.
That's so good. Really, I'm pretty good. Uh Ms. Smith? Second one. All right, board comments?
I have things to say tonight. I've learned so much about. Um first of all, thank you so much, Debbie. I feel like we as a board had extremely unreasonable expectations when we got hired. We all had a list of like five hundred thousand things we wanted you to say in this meeting and you did every, everything we were asking. So I feel like I learned things tonight that even though I've been on the board for a couple of years, I didn't even realize. And I feel like you've done the most important thing of educating our community as to where our money is going and how things are funded and what tax increases look like. And I think that's something that the community's been begging for. So thank you. Ms. Smith, thank you so much for revamping this program, saving all kinds of money and using your talents here at the school this year. We appreciate it greatly. Um I know it was Administrative Professionals Day or Secretaries Day, School Day, Teacher Appreciation Day, but I'm very, very grateful to all of you for everything that you do. Um my children have had such a great experience here at Mars and I'm so grateful to each of you. My daughter is super psyched for Watermelon Welcome. She's ready for Mars. I'm hopeful Mars is ready for her. She's been inspired. So we look forward to that tomorrow. And thank you, Dr. Man and Dr. Grace for bringing that back. That means so much to parents of these COVID babies who have not had opportunities to go to the library or do anything else and are now all socially out of control. So we look forward to that tomorrow. Thank you.
Been exciting, though.
When the red heads are around, people, people, I'm gonna pretend she's not mine. Just to clarify. I do, yeah. And she's the baby of brothers, so. She's trouble.
Any other comments this side?
I wanted to thank the parents, um the, for all the schools, the P T O, as well as um the other parents in the middle school and the high school. We're putting on Teacher and Staff Appreciation Lunchtime. So we have a lot of parents donate money, donate food, and we have a lot of exciting things to do for the teachers this week. So I just wanted to thank them for their contribution.
An email from Mrs. Kennedy just today, actually. Uh had several students nominated for the M C award on the track like them. That's that's fantastic. The best of uh arts programs. We usually have several nominations, actually, that they do a real, they can talk.
Thanks all the teachers and staff for the Appreciation Week, not just this week, all the two weeks of the year. Thanks to everybody that did the great work. Debbie, that was fantastic, especially for somebody who doesn't really know what's going on here this. The region. So, thank you. Up on the side of the room?
Ms. Stavish? Yes. Okay. Thank you um for bringing all of that to our attention. Um it's very clear that you're very passionate about um that issue and what you do. So um I I appreciate you bringing that to us. And I would just like to say, if there are issues like that, we, we, I truly, none of us obviously knew about that situation. So I think we as a board are very open to hearing those issues, hearing um what the problems are and how to resolve them. So I just appreciate you coming in and getting us such a veto explanation about what was going on.
I'd like to say thank you also to all the teachers and staff. I mean, I just much appreciate the amount of work uh goes into every day and it's great. I appreciate it. I think all had great experiences here as well. So, thank you.
Same here. Happy Staff Appreciation Week for everybody. Yes, for our twenty-three years in the district. It's always been fantastic. It's a tough experience. So thanks very much. Thank you for bringing to our attention. I can't wait to go down to the new classroom. Check it one out.
Still in your backyard.
You know what? Actually, I'll watch.
Have a groundbreaking.
Yes. Debbie, thank you very much. This was definitely what we've been trying to get to, um to help communicate with the public. And I think a lot of the public questions have been asked before. So thank you.
Yeah, that's why I have it last because everybody says it with anyone.
And I forgot, I wanted to mention, this is the first study because I think on the board that no staff positions are being cut and we're adding positions. I think that's important for the community to recognize that. There's more teachers coming.
Any other board comments? Any questions, Adrian?
Thank you, Jimmy.
Justin second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Have a great night, everyone. Roger ring.